Three plans, three scenarios. One for a full open with multiple mitigation strategies. A second, a hybrid model that combines onsite and remote learning. And then a third where the schools are physically closed and all the learning is remote. What I heard today from a meeting I was on is that the state will release the health benchmarks or triggers or standards that will determine which model is used and when. And we of course will be guided by Wilton's Department of Health. And I just want to remind everyone, just as a reminder, is that if we have any hope of a full open, we all have to continue wearing masks and social distancing whenever we're out in public. So anyway, the scenarios raise literally hundreds of questions and challenges. And I want to commend Dr. Smith, the entire staff, and some volunteer committee members for their total commitment and concern. And we also thank the parents who have sent us comments and suggestions and questions. Please keep them coming. So to say it again, health and safety is our top priority and the most important aspect of any of these plans. We will follow the health data and the best medical and scientific thinking at the time. So in order to support this as our top priority, we know things will not be normal. Here are some normal, not normal things I've been able to generalize about so far. First is, our first focus is on the school day. This a monumental task in itself. And the time we have before school starts will focus on getting the school day right so we can implement it, get comfortable with the routines after school opens, track the health data before we open up and increase activities such as to comprehensive co-curricular and athletic programs. Another thing that won't be normal is some things are going to start much more simply than usual. An easy example is the school lunch. We may, we will start out with limited menu options, get comfortable with the health standards and the delivery methods, and then we'll move into more menu options. Another thing that will not be normal is some of our usual priorities will get bumped by the pressing concerns of the virus. Another very simple example is we strive for energy efficiency. But when we consider ventilation, circulation, filtration systems recommended to protect against COVID, energy efficiency will take a backseat. Another thing that's not normal is some of our long-held historical mantras will change. For example, for decades, we have encouraged parents to use the school bus in order to avoid traffic congestion. Now we welcome parents driving and we'll have to figure out the traffic issues. Another thing not normal, things will not necessarily look the same K-12. We have to be guided by the age of the students, the different educational structures at the different schools, and the health data for different age groups. Another thing, we may well use all the scenarios next year, from the full open to the remote only, depending on what the virus does. And last, we need resources and staff, materials, supply, furniture, equipment, PPE, and personnel. So as a board, we will do our best to ensure we have the needed resources. We will focus on the system as a whole. And we know that the plans will contain elements that not everyone will agree with. So as a board, we will look to solutions and plans that are the safest for students and staff, are the most reasonable to implement overall, and that advance the academic program while supporting the social and emotional needs of kids. We will also adopt necessary policies. Some of them will be new and some of them we will have to revise to ensure district-wide consistency and compliance during this virus. We will communicate regularly, be as transparent as possible, and we always encourage everyone's input. So with that introduction, I want to turn it over to Dr. Smith. And I think you'll hear a lot of the hard work and the details. So thank you in advance.
Great. Thanks Debbie and good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Everybody looks great. Gretchen and I think we're all a little bit jealous of where you're sitting tonight. There seems to be water somewhere near you.
There is water near me.
Great. So tonight, and we'll continue, start the conversation tonight and then continue the conversation next week and more than likely in subsequent meetings after that. As you know, as a district, we established nine goal areas to address all of our reentry reopening concerns. And so tonight, I wanted to spend time taking you through what we've put together so far really around that goal one area. And this is information that I shared with the goal one reopening committee that met yesterday and solicited some great feedback and great questions. And so we, we take that and we continue to refine and sharpen our plans. So what I'll do is I'll share my screen and I'm just going to use these slides to guide the conversation. But as always, you know, feel free to stop me and just ask questions as we go along. Whenever I do that, I lose you all, so. There we go. Okay. So, um, the, as you know, the state of Connecticut and the State Department of Education has directed school districts to develop three plans. Assuming that transmission rates are really low. Plan A is to have school districts be prepared to have all students back full-time five days a week. With an increase in transmission rates that will be determined by the Department of Public Health, districts may be required to transition to a hybrid, which would have some kids in school and some kids at home. And if the, we saw a really significant increase in COVID cases, then we may find ourselves back where we were several months ago in a full remote plan. So in order to address our reopening concerns, we have a number of practices that we'll be implementing. The first is around face coverings. And this is, you know, mandatory for all students and staff. They'll be required to wear face coverings while in the building. As you know, or may have read, there are some carve-outs to that. One carve-out is cloth face covering should not be worn by children under the age of two or anyone else who has trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. We also have students in our student population who may not tolerate wearing masks or may not tolerate wearing masks for long periods of time. So as part of our planning, we're looking to accommodate those. But in general, all staff and students and anybody else who comes into the building will be wearing masks. It's our intention to provide masks to staff, although we'll invite them if they have masks or other face coverings they want to use that are more comfortable to certain, certainly will be able to. We'll also invite families to send students with their own masks. And of course, we'll have a significant supply of disposable masks on hand at each school. That's face coverings. With respect to social distancing, so this is a, this is an important one. With the caveat that all schools be prepared to welcome back all students simultaneously, we're not able to do that and always and everywhere achieve six feet of social distancing. So we've gone back into the literature, we've looked at our classrooms. And what we are looking at right now is that in classrooms, teacher workstations would be six feet apart from students. And in the front of classrooms, we would have six feet of space to enable teachers to maintain that distance away from students, at least in the front of the classroom. Student workstations, however, would be spaced three feet apart. Within that, all of the desks or tables, as the case may be, would face in the same direction. Students who would be sitting at tables would be seated at opposite ends. And then we would put a sneeze guard or some other kind of plastic barrier in between. In addition to promote social distancing, we're also working on grouping students or cohorting students, as the term is often used, to minimize interaction with large numbers of other students. So at the lower schools, as you can imagine, this is much easier to achieve with a few minor exceptions. When you get into middle school and high school, as the schedules get more complicated, keeping students cohorted is much more challenging. So at Middlebrook, they're imagining kind of a large cohort and then to the best extent possible, sub-cohorts within that. So if you can imagine at the team level, conceiving of the team as kind of one larger cohort and then within that team trying to keep kids grouped in their classrooms as much as possible is the goal. But it's important to understand that because of the nuances in the schedule and the different classes they offer, that's not going to be achievable everywhere. We have some similar, although it doesn't impact as many kids, similar concerns at Sutter Mill as well. And so while we are making the effort, it's really important, and I want to be upfront with everybody so people are really clear, that you know, this is not going to be a perfect single strategy. In addition, social distancing will be requiring a routine around hand washing and hand sanitizing. So all staff and students will wash our sanitized hands frequently. In terms of a schedule, we're imagining upon arrival, after using restrooms, before and after lunch, prior to dismissal, other appropriate times during the day when students or staff cough or sneeze. But there'll be a very robust schedule to do that. We're also in the process of installing hand sanitizer stations in all the classrooms. And then we'll have either wall-mounted or freestanding stations dispersed throughout the schools. So hand sanitizing solutions will be readily available.
Yeah, Kevin, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, you know, I think as I read, and perhaps this is the appropriate place to ask it. The water in the schools, the schools have been shut down now for several months. And have we contracted for or made arrangements to have the water in each of the schools tested to make sure that it's okay? Since it's sitting, you know?
The water tested yet Glenn, but we will. And Jose and his team, you know, that concern came, popped up a couple of months ago. So they're running the water pretty regularly in all the buildings. Certainly make sure that the water is safe.
We will have it all tested and be able to assure the parents the water is safe. And okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Right. Got it. Great. And then in addition to those mitigation strategies, we'll also continue to engage in enhanced cleaning and disinfecting techniques. So we have the Department of Public Health guidelines which will follow. So in general, all classrooms and all high-touch areas will be cleaned and disinfected daily. Our bathrooms will be cleaned and disinfected at least twice a day. In order to achieve this, we are going to have to hire additional custodians. Jose Figaro, our facilities manager, estimated will need approximately seven additional custodians to keep up with the Department of Public Health guidelines for cleaning and disinfecting. I'm sorry, did you, I didn't, did somebody say something? I didn't hear that.
Yeah. I just said wow.
I think it was like Glenn sort of keeling over, like before the rest of us. But we understand. Sorry. I don't mean to make light of it. I know we need the staff.
Yeah. And that's, I think, you know, again, as we are talking and working through these plans, you know, there are significant financial considerations as we are making modifications and preparations to enable, if the health data permits, to have all students back. So as we had named previously, we do have three plans that are under development. So Plan A is the governor's plan to have all students back. So that's schools are open for all students five days a week. The second plan would be what I refer to as a semi-remote plan. Others refer to it as a hybrid plan. And you know, in essence, that's just the option. Again, because of transmission rates in the community, part of the student population would be in session in person and then part of the student population would be home participating in remote instruction. We're looking at a couple of different models, but the model that seems to have the most resonance at this point is a 2-1-2 model or an A-B model where students are, you know, in session two days a week and then home two days a week. And then that fifth day could be all remote instruction to enable custodians to deep clean the building. But well, those are, those plans are still coming together and we expect to have a decision or a recommendation by the time we meet next week. And then the third plan, if transmission rates are really out of control again, is to have all students participating in online learning. And next week, when we revisit the next goals, we'll talk to you in great detail about how we're using Schoology as our platform to try to ensure as much as possible seamless instruction between in-person and remote learning. There's some interesting ideas being batted around. And with the use of technology, we think that we can go a long way in helping make, integrate kids who are at home into some of our in-person classrooms. So we named this a little bit, but student grouping. This again is, you know, a process that's under development. But as I mentioned earlier, grouping students by class. The goal really with this mitigation strategy is just to try to limit the number of people that students and staff come in contact with across a school day. Also, as part of the state plan, parents have the option to not participate in in-person learning. They can participate fully in remote learning and can change that decision at any time and have their children come back to school in person when they're ready. So we did survey our families. And as of tonight, I looked at the results just before the last meeting. We've had 2,996 responses so far. And within that, 65% of our families are choosing to have their children participate in full-time in-person instruction. 12% suggested that they would opt for the remote learning option. And then the remaining 22% are uncertain. And so as we develop, further develop and publish our plans, you know, I expect people will be making decisions. So obviously, those numbers have serious implications for how we're scheduling and how we're structuring. So as we move through the summer, you know, we'll be reaching out to identify the specific families who are opting out and making class assignments and et cetera.
Kevin, can I ask a question? Of the 12% who suggested they would perhaps opt for remote, and I didn't see the questionnaire myself since I'm not a parent, current parent, do, was there a space for reasons?
You know what? There wasn't definitely. Choice A, choice B.
Okay.
So the only, the other information that we have is really just a breakdown by grade.
Sure.
Barely a uniform distribution, K-12.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And then are you going to talk about the staff? Because I know you sent out a staff survey too. I don't know if you're able to talk about that.
Yeah, I can give you the numbers. I looked at the most recent results. And so we did, we sent out a survey. Maria put it together and, you know, I invited her to comment on it as well. And we were guided, you know, by the law in terms of, you know, what details we could ask for. You know, the question really, we gave a checklist of considerations and asked teachers, you know, if any of these considerations apply to you, you know, would you not be able to return to work? And so as of just an hour ago, we had 318 staff members respond. Of that number, 112 said, checked one of those items and said, you know, they would not be able to return to work. A few of those had concerns related to childcare. And then there were quite a number who, you know, may have some conditions in their lives that place them in that higher risk category. So 112 staff members said they didn't think that they would be able to participate in full learning and then 208 did. Maria, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I would just add that the, the survey that we sent, as Kevin noted, is an ADA compliant survey in that it lumps all of the potential reasons together. So staff members who responded that they may not be able to return include staff members who may not be able to return because their own children either may not be in school or childcare centers may be closed. And while we don't know the exact breakdown of how many people responded because of that component, we did ask for people to identify themselves so that we can follow up. And a number of people just self-reported that part of the, you know, that their reasons for selecting yes, that they may have problems returning to work, were related to childcare issues. So that's something to be mindful of. The other piece is that some of the respondents responded yes, but said that they weren't sure whether or not they fell into a high-risk category. And this is a survey that we're going to re-administer as we get closer to the start of the school year. And between now and then, we're also going to be sharing out with people what their rights are, what their options are. There are many questions about whether leave would be covered or not, whether it would be job protected, whether there would be a component for pay. And I think all of these things will factor into people's decisions ultimately about whether they'll return or whether they'll seek some sort of formal accommodation. So it's, I think it's a good start to give us a sense of where people are. But we recognize that that number is subject to change between now and the start of the school year. And we'll be checking back again.
Can you give me a sense of what percentage of the total staff, that total teaching staff is? You said you had 300 and some responses, you know, out of what? And then the 112 who indicated that they might not be able to return? Do you know what the 112 represents in terms of a percentage, a rough percentage?
We don't because not everyone necessarily identified themselves. So I can tell you from the earlier survey that we sent. Well, first I'll tell you, the 350 respondents are out of about 600 staff members.
Okay.
And the survey is open until tomorrow. So we may have more responses between now and tomorrow. I can tell you that the survey that we sent in June, where we asked staff members whether or not there would be an issue with childcare, we had 78 staff members say that there would be an issue with childcare. Those were teachers. And when we asked whether or not they would take advantage of childcare if we offered it, we would have about 158 children participating if we were to offer some sort of onsite childcare. So that is something that we, we are exploring. I don't know if we're going to be able to offer it. I think there are a lot of moving parts. I mean, first, we want to ensure that we can offer a safe school site for the children that attend. But it's certainly something that we're still considering.
Okay. So just one more question about the math. Am I right to think that 112 indicated maybe not out of a total of 600?
Yes. It's about, it's, uh, yes, out of yes, exactly right. Yes.
All right. And that's all the staff, not necessarily only classroom teachers?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Just, I guess the biggest question is, if that came anywhere near fruition, what, what do we do?
So, go ahead.
So we're, one of the things that we're doing is we're looking at a number of different options. We've been reviewing the, the protocols that the state has put forward in terms of certification to see if there would be an opportunity to bring in substitutes, to utilize our other staff differently, our paraprofessional staff differently. Currently, the state has not changed its requirements regarding certification. So they are requiring that teachers that are teachers of record working directly with students need to be certified in the subject area that, that the class is in. However, there, there may be some opportunities to have teachers of record working to direct other groups, perhaps paraprofessionals and utilizing them differently. We have been in the process of identifying all of the certifications that, that staff members within the district hold. Not just teachers, but paraprofessionals and substitute teachers as well. We actually have a number of staff members in those other groups that are certified teachers. So we've been trying to think out of the box a bit about how we might leverage other staff members if we have people that are not able to come onsite or not able to return to work at all. But it is definitely a concern. You know, I think it's, we could provide support for a limited number. But if we had 30% of our staff not returning to work, that would be of significant concern in terms of our ability to run our courses the way that they're currently running. So.
Okay. So next week, will you update us on those numbers?
Sure. Yes. Of the certifications like that. Yes.
If you can get it a little bit parse more precisely, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah. It's a really important point. And, you know, I don't think that number, you know, that while those people have identified they have, you know, particular concerns, we have lots and lots of staff members who have more generalized concerns just about returning to school and, you know, are the conditions going to be sufficient so we can provide enough safety or reassurance? And I think that's a, you know, it's just a conversation that we have to have.
Sure. Sure.
Really think very carefully about these plans and what's feasible and what's not. So within this choosing not to participate, I want to just talk a minute and, you know, again, just know that we'll have a much more substantive conversation a week from now about the instructional model. But in thinking about how we need to be flexible, so clearly, as Maria just highlighted, we're going to need to think very flexibly, just given what our staff availability might be. We also know we need to think flexibly. And this really led to our decision, you know, several months ago, to adopt Schoology in terms of trying to manage the, all of the variables that come into reopening school. And so what we're thinking about right now, and our goal is to provide, you know, the best instruction, best education possible for all students, regardless of where they are, whether they're sitting in classrooms or sitting at home or sitting someplace else. And we need to be able to respond to all kinds of conditions. So we know we're going to have a group already that have opted out, about 12%. It's likely we'll have another group that may start the year or want to start the year in person. But then because of, you know, family conditions, potential exposure, they may have to quarantine or opt out of the in-person instructional program for a period of time. We may have others who are out and want to opt in because they're feeling better or the reverse. And then we also have to respond to whatever other conditions are in the environment. So if we have an exposure at school and we have to close the schools. So thinking about different models and how we manage all of those considerations fluidly led us to begin to think really carefully about how we might focus on the live instruction, the in-person classrooms, and really have those students for whom it's appropriate that are at home remotely, assigned to those classes and then use video streaming technology, all of the robust technology that's embedded in Schoology to participate fully in those live sessions. And so we're thinking, you know, can we come up with an approach that makes sense and is meaningful and will provide a really good opportunity for students to interact seamlessly with the teacher, with kids in session? So that's the model we're pursuing right now as the kind of proposed most common model. Working with Fran and Eric, we're gathering some equipment and we're going to set up some classrooms and we're going to test some of these ideas. We've also, we've heard, and you know, we can get into this more next week, thinking about some of our youngest learners. This might not be an approach that makes the most sense for them. So in fact, it might be preferable to create pure online classes that are directed by a teacher and they don't have that same kind of connection to live classes. I also have begun to hear from teachers across the district as they're learning about these plans. And I know lots of people are thinking about this. So I expect I'll continue to get feedback and suggestions and recommendations about how we might be able to conquer some of these challenges and ensure that we're providing a really good, high-quality instruction for kids regardless of where they are. So I wanted to, in thinking about, you know, this idea of, you know, families who may choose not to participate, give the board a sense of what we're thinking about in terms of an instructional model that we think might be most effective in providing instruction, enabling kids to develop a sense of community, even though they're dialing in remotely, you know, with their class, with the teacher. But there's lots and lots and lots of questions about the viability and the efficacy of that approach among every other approach. And so standby, we'll, we'll continue to provide a lot of information as we move forward here. Some other considerations, so our communication plans are also under development. We will have written expectations that will publish and distribute to families. We are in the process of creating training videos for students and families around all of these social distancing guidelines and new routines and practices that are going to be present in our schools. As we have, we'll continue to provide updates routinely. We have a Friday communication. We have a Friday communication that goes out to families. We also use our school messenger system as much as necessary. We'll work through the Wilton Health Department to disseminate information about, you know, COVID positivity. And then, of course, any decisions around opening and closing will be in close coordination with the Barry Bogalar Local Health Director. And that would certainly be communicated in, through our emergency communication system. As part of that family survey, we also asked how many parents would opt to drive their children to school and how many would need the bus? And it looks like just about 75% of families said that they would drive their children to schools, and then the other remaining 25 will need to use the bus. So this, again, because it's voluntary, parents can, you know, opt in and opt out of using the bus. It seems to me we're going to need to maintain our bus routes, but given the smaller numbers, I think we can manage if those numbers are accurate, and again, we haven't by grade level. I think we're probably better suited to manage some of the social distancing questions that cropped up around the busing concern. What we're working on right now at each of the schools is a plan to accommodate all of those cars that will be dropping students off. So I'm imagining we're going to need to stagger arrival and dismissal to promote social distancing and just accommodate that volume of people coming into the building and leaving the building in a safe way.
Yeah, Kevin, we're, we're still required to have the monitors on the buses in addition to the drivers, correct?
Monitors were not required, they were recommended.
Oh, oh, okay, I misunderstood, okay.
Yeah, and so that's, that's an area, you know, that we're, we're looking at. We had a proposal from STA for monitors that was cost prohibitive, so other possibilities. And, you know, like the custodians, we know that we're going to probably have some other staffing needs, you know, just in terms of the daily operations and safety management of the building. So we're looking to see if we can kind of marry some of these things through a staffing proposal.
All right, because I was under the impression that the monitors were a state requirement and not, but that's good, you know? I'm glad to hear that.
Kevin, can I just get a sense of scale on the numbers? When you said 75% indicated that they would be willing to drive their kids, you know, not a full commitment, but, you know, 75% indicated that at this point, you know, they're willing to drive. Do you know what percentage of our parents usually drive, just so I can get a sense of what the difference is?
Good question, and I'd ask the principals to weigh in on this one, too. I think it's probably 40 to 50%.
Okay, so that's not, so we didn't start from zero and got to 75%?
No, figure, yeah, I mean, based on those estimates, it's an additional, you know, 25, maybe 30%, depending on the building.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
So with respect to some of our other operational plans, quite a bit of work to do in thinking through the routing of traffic, staggering of arrival and dismissal and traffic flow. So we'll be partnering with our town emergency operations people to think through some of those logistics as well. We've also been thinking and planning for lunch, we've had a couple of conversations with the folks from Chartwells this week. And right now, our current thinking provides for students across the district to eat lunch in classrooms. As part of that, we obviously need to investigate the cleaning logistics as well as the varying allergy, allergy concerns that many of our students have and how we would safely manage those in the classroom. We're looking at plans to deliver lunches to the classroom so students don't have to come down to the cafeteria. So that's all underway at the moment. And then we're also hoping to take advantage of our outdoor spaces. And so even, again, considering, you know, this concept, there are lots and lots of questions and considerations that go into the planning and thinking about it. But what we'd like to do is encourage as much instruction on good weather days to take place outside as possible. We are looking at acquiring, you know, some tents that we could place around those schools in those outdoor spaces. We certainly wouldn't have enough to accommodate every single class all at the same time, but again, just to enhance the outdoor environment and invite that possibility to the extent possible, we're interested in exploring that. Working with Eric Hawkinson and his team, we are in the process of examining our Wi-Fi capacity. We do have some limited Wi-Fi capacity along the exterior of all of our buildings presently, so we're just working on a plan to amplify that. So if students are working outdoors, they can be able to use their devices.
Kevin, going back to Chartwells, are we required to have Chartwells? Could we just ever say, everyone bring your own lunch, just to minimize another cohort?
We're in a contract with Chartwells, and so, you know, we also are obliged to provide lunches to those students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So we could invite parents to bring their own lunches, but I think in the state plan, we are required to have a service plan.
Okay.
So looking at class sizes, we went across the district and measured the, each of the rooms. On average, our classrooms are about 900 square feet. So removing some of the additional furniture, each classroom can house approximately 20 to 24 students while maintaining both the three feet of social distance between students and then six feet between students and teachers. As part of that, you know, we do run some sections in at least the middle school and the high school, particularly the high school, where classes exceed 24. So Bob and his team are looking at revising sectioning to accommodate this spacing limitations. There will also, as we open additional sections, we'll have, there'll be staffing implications they will need to hire or provide payment for overages to cover the cost of running those additional sections. We've also, we've looked at our furniture and at the middle school, the high school, Sarder Mill, we have still maintained a lot of the standalone desks. So in trying to set up this and that, it helps a lot. We do have tables in many classrooms, and so where they're an appropriate length, we can put a physical barrier in the middle and have two students seated at either end. We do have some classrooms where the furniture really isn't sufficient, so we're working with a company that we've purchased from in the past to receive some furniture acquisition proposals, particularly our kindergarten classrooms. We have three foot, I think they're three-foot square tables in those classrooms, and typically we would sit four students around them. In this scenario, we can only sit one student per table in those classrooms, so we're certainly going to need to add furniture there. We are, as we are setting up classrooms and removing surplus furniture from classrooms, we will be, as much as we're able to, realacating furniture to outfit classrooms. But that, it doesn't make sense to bring furniture from the high school to middle The other opportunity related to that, that we are investigating right now is the creation of temporary classrooms. And so there are a couple of things that we need to accommodate. One, with the sectioning that Bob and his team are doing, there may be a need to create temporary classrooms. And so we're engaged, again, with strategic spaces to look at some opportunities to see how we might be able to configure classrooms in the spaces like the cafeteria. We also need to have the capacity to clear a class out of a classroom if a child gets sick. So we will need additional classroom space. So we're looking at all of the available rooms we have and then working on some plans to create some additional. We have a company coming in tomorrow to tour each of the buildings, and they're going to advise us on traffic flow and signage and some of those logistics related to student and adult movement across the building. So I expect to have some plans and proposals from them within the next two weeks that we'll share with the board. Our HVAC specialist has been engaged with an air balancing professional, and they've looked at a couple of our systems, and he'll be providing feedback as well. We took the additional step to engage with a commissioning agent who's going to come through and look at all of our systems and then provide us recommendations and feedback to maximize airflow as well as to augment our filtering systems. So that's underway right now, and we'll have lots more information in the next couple of weeks from that group.
Are there certain requirements that need to be met, that, like new requirements based on COVID that HVAC folks have set up?
Do you know, I haven't read about new requirements. You know, there are airflow standards, you know, kind of per-person airflow standards in a room, and so, you know, we minimally always need to, to meet those standards. But the recommendation in the Department of Public Health guidelines is to take steps to ensure, you know, maximum amount of airflow, you know, in classrooms. And so they have recommendations to look at HVAC systems, to open windows where possible to address filtering systems. So that's what, that's what they're engaged in.
Okay.
As part of the state plan, well, let me, I'm sorry, let me back up a step. So we've also engaged with Turner Construction. Hopefully, that's an organization with which you're familiar. Turner led the middle driscoll renovation. They've also done rental work at the high school in the past. So they're very, very familiar with our school buildings. So representatives from Turner have been in all of our buildings, and they're making recommendations and will be providing feedback on the creation of physical barriers in some of our office spaces and other nurses' office areas where we need those kinds of barriers to promote separation. Per the state law, the state plan, we're also required to create isolation rooms for students who may exhibit COVID positive, COVID symptoms during the school day. So working with Chris Burney and Jose, we are identifying areas within each school to create those isolation rooms. And there's a series of recommendations published by the state that speak to, speak to those needs, so that will be in place for us. We have plans under development to limit the sharing of student materials, and so certainly with a lot of our work taking place in SchoolAGY, we'll be relying very heavily, as we did months ago, on our digital devices, but we'll be publishing plans to parents to provide very simple means for, in classroom resources, so students don't have to share. Our art and music folks are working on a plan to create individual student kits that would enable them to run their classes without students having to share materials. So all that's underway. We have made the decision that we won't be utilizing student lockers this year, so students will have to either leave things in the classroom or bring things to and from school.
Does that include their coats, like once it gets cold?
Yeah, we won't be using lockers. And the, the reason we won't be using lockers is simply the congestion that occurs in the hallway, you know, when students are at their lockers. It just, it doesn't appear to be manageable at this point. So I think, you know, we're, we'll continue to look at those plans, Gretchen, and I expect some of these things may evolve as we learn more. Our safety drills, well, those are also under development, so I believe, you know, we're still expected to engage in safety drills, engage in fire drills, so we're working on plans to do that safely. And then the, the last piece, just I'd call your attention to under these operational concerns, are around volunteers. And one of the strong recommendations that makes a lot of sense is we limit access to our school buildings by nonessential personnel as much as possible. So we will be limiting access in just about every way to only those folks who actually have to be in the building. As part of all this, we are working on developing a series of clear expectations. And so in terms of the general parent expectations, you know, we'll be asking parents to conduct daily health checks of their children, look for COVID symptoms, take a temperature, and if a child's temperature is greater than 100 degrees, we would ask parents to keep their children home. With students, you know, again, if you don't feel well, you need to stay home. Parents have to do a health check, face coverings will be required, social distancing will be required, all of that, hand washing and hand sanitizer housing will be required. And then students who are participating on our busing system will be limited to, you know, the buses that they are assigned to. And then similarly, we're developing expectations for our staff members, and these are, and necessarily need to be repeated, they're very similar to the others. So in general, those are some of the operational concerns and limitations that we are putting into place at the moment. I think, as I'm thinking about all of this, the school building that causes me the most concern is we're contemplating bringing everybody back, is the high school. And just thinking about the logistics of managing that and having, you know, the extent to which we keep students in class and how we navigate all of their very complex schedules as well as the movement through the hallways as they're transitioning from one period to another is very, very tricky, not to mention just their developmental stage in life. So I'll stop there, let me, I'll stop sharing my screen and, again, take questions and discuss any of those kind of broad pieces.
Yeah, Kevin, a couple of things. First, yeah, I've been impressed with the number of messages that I've seen from parents within the system who've raised some very interesting questions and have some very interesting comments. Going back to your hybrid system, if we have to go days in, days out, et cetera, one of the parents wrote a fairly well-written, and I thought, well thought out, proposal that we do a system where we split the students in half and we go like five days on, five days off, five days on and five days off. And for the high school to address your concern about moving kids through the school, et cetera, et cetera, that seems to me to be a logical approach to take, that if you split into, yeah, every kid is in school Monday through Friday this week, they're off-distance learning the next week, back in school the following week. And it seems to, to me, to give the teachers the benefit of having five straight days of having those kids there and then the ability to plan for the five days off. I, I don't know, it just, it was a very thoughtful message, and to some degree, it does address your concerns about moving kids through the high school, you know, you have half the numbers there, which would be a simpler process. And I don't know if you've thought about that, I don't know if that's been a discussion topic or whatever.
Have, and it is, and actually, you know, Ruth and I were talking a little bit about that yesterday as well, because a model like that does promote cohorting. There are, there are benefits and drawbacks to each of the various models.
Okay, yeah, obviously, and I just, there is no one right model, there's no doubt about it. We made, and we'll learn as we get into it, what, what's working, what isn't working, and we'll have to be adaptable, flexible and adaptive as we go through it, there's no question about that. But that one just struck me as being a fairly logical, you know, thought process to, to try and approach and work on.
Yeah, the, you know, I think the, the other really important question we have to pay close attention to is around social distancing, and I've been looking at literature, as I can find it, around the, you know, COVID transmission in children, and we came to three feet for student workstations based on the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance that was all reinforced by literature produced from the World Health Organization. A Goal One committee meeting yesterday, a couple of the policy people that were on the call did make the point that while there is very little research on COVID transmission in children, there is some evidence that suggests that the transmission is much lower in younger children and maybe not quite as low as older children. And so the upshot of that conversation was, you know, perhaps we need to go back and rethink the, the three-foot proposal for Wilton High School.
Kevin, what about specials? I know earlier in the summer we have discussed a lot of specials, where are you guys with that?
Right, so I think, you know, wherever possible, we want to contain kids in their classrooms, and so... And so, you know, the proposal for the most part would have some of those specials teachers coming to the classroom. Now, the FAPA and P E folks are looking at some other possibilities. I think Chuck's on the call and he's been working with them so he can give some insight into what some of their thinking is.
But so as of now, you're thinking full day with full classroom specials and no really dismissal or anything, that's our goal?
To the extent possible, we want to have, if we can do it safely, we'd like to have a school day. Chuck, do you want to just update with some of the thinking presented by our FAPA folks?
Sure, so, you know, Miller Driscoll, at least to begin with, we're thinking that the specials would come to the classroom. Gym might be a little different. We might have the kids going outside, at least to begin with. You know, a lot of this is going to depend on how things go and our evolving understanding and our experience in doing this. I think we're thinking of something somewhat similar at Cider Mill in terms of, at least art, we are looking at spaces for music, larger spaces. When you're dealing with singing and for instance, instruments that involve blowing, we have greater distancing requirements than the classroom would allow. So we would need to use other spaces. And that's true also at the, at the middle school. At the high school, we are thinking of having students going to those special places. Again, because of the requirements around particularly music for singing and wind instruments, we need larger spaces. So the kids would need to travel to those spaces. Both art and music, though, are looking at individual kits for each kid so that we won't have as much sharing. The only problem might be with some of the larger instruments, such as the bass and the tuba, we would make sure that students aren't sharing mouthpieces. And there are some cleaning protocols that we would use with some of those larger instruments. And we will be following the national guidelines for their respective disciplines.
I just have a comment, and again, I don't know the health guidance, so I'm just going by my gut reaction and what I've read, that singing is just about the worst thing you can do at this point in time. So I'm just wondering, is there a way to postpone the actual singing and, you know, wait a while before we get into that and start some other modes of music? You know, I just, I'm just worried about everybody starting such an intense activity. You know, even if you do double the size of the classroom, or even if you take them outside, it's, to me, again, it sounds fairly risky. So that, you know, I just kind of want to go back to, can we kind of start slow and then get into things as we get comfortable and we know certain things are safe before we add another layer that may be more risky than others?
In some instances, that's okay. In some instances, the FAPA people are thinking that singing would only occur with, with masks and still with 12 feet of distance between kids. But maybe what would be helpful for the board is if we had some of the FAPA people come in and talk about their plans so that you're more.
Okay, you're absolutely right. I did, was not envisioning singing with masks. That's a new one for me. So thank you.
Sure.
I think though, also in addition to Deb's comment about some of the riskier kind of special activities, that if we do kind of ramp up slowly, it also might be a fair thing to kind of gauge parental comfort as well in terms of, you know, one thing, how might, how, you know, a family member might feel about being in a classroom. And another thing, how they might feel about them being in a, in a quarrel setting, you know, and perhaps even with masks and 12 feet, you know, the different types of risk tolerances.
That's a good point. I will share that with the music people.
Yeah, and I think thematically, it, it makes a lot of sense. And we've talked in various groups about starting slow, focusing as Debbie commented at the opening of the meeting, on let's get the core activities in place, let's feel good and safe about them, and then let's move on to some of the other activities. And I think that's a, as a strategy for reopening school, that makes a whole lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, Kevin, I don't say this lightly because I know a lot of people are full-time employees, as I am myself, and the idea of, of, you know, the hybrid model or whatever is daunting. But would you ever consider holding off on specials or maybe doing specials via Zoom just to get these academics going for the first month or so?
I think everything's on the table. I mean, you know, like I said, we're, we're looking at each of the component parts of our, of our program. And, you know, I feel a strong obligation to deliver a full curriculum to kids. It's what people in this town expect. But we certainly wouldn't make any decisions or engage in any programs that would, you know, further endanger students. I'm also, I spend a lot of time, as I'm, you know, today's no exception, I'm in classrooms, I'm trying to imagine what life is like, both for teachers and especially for students. And so, you know, for many of our kids, the stride activities, the specials activities is where they find their most enjoyment. And while I'm certainly sensitive to needing to focus, I would be, I don't want to prematurely judge something until we've really, you know, vetted the, vetted our ability to do it well. And so I guess that's maybe not a, not a, not an answer, but.
That's a good point. I just, the idea of these kids sitting at their desk all day in one room, it kind of diminishes the effect of specials.
Reminds me of when I was a Catholic school teacher.
Oh, God.
Yeah, the, so it's, I think we all would benefit from just thinking a little bit about just, you know, life for students. And, you know, I know our staff and I know our teachers and I certainly know our administrators. And, you know, we all have a shared commitment to the, the culture of our school, lively and robust as possible. And, you know, we are very challenged with the social distancing guidelines and mitigation strategies that we are employing. Life is, is going to be very different. So even in light of that, I know our staff will carry the day.
I have a question about costs. Will you be able to bring to the board at some point the specifics, resources, as you know them, that you want to request? And then perhaps a range, a budget range of what you're looking at? You know, it'll, the cost will be X to Y, you know, when you do, I'm not asking for premature numbers, but, you know, just to give the board a sense. So as we, you know, approve things that, you know, we're not gasping, you know, first. So we get some prep as to what it will take.
Yeah, I'm, I'm coming now as we have them. So I can probably, I think by next week, we'll have some preliminary numbers as we've sorted out some of the scheduling concerns and the staffing concerns. We're looking at a fairly large expenditure for P P E. Certainly, I mean, you can, just the furniture.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, we know it's coming, but now it's time to start putting some, you know, certain numbers next to it and figuring out the impact on the budget.
Well, clearly, you know, the additional custodial staff wipes out all the reserves that we set aside for COVID. I mean, I'm trying to remember what that number was and, but it was $300,000 or $400,000. Well, so to custodians for a year, that's gone. So there's no more money for anything else COVID related. We're going to be in a hole, no doubt about it, and a significant one, I'm afraid.
Glenn, if I could jump in, Kevin, we're right in the midst of applying to FEMA for the first two quarters.
Yeah.
And once we get, FEMA will cover 75% of whatever it's been approved, whatever they approve. Then we take that 25% and we turn it around and we go to the state. The state has two options, has an education fund and it has a general state fund. Unfortunately, with the educational fund, it's based on our Title I funds, which in the whole scheme of the state, we don't get a large amount. So our reimbursement from the education fund right now will be smaller than we would put it to the state fund. The goal is right now is to get the reimbursement for the first two quarters and use that reimbursement to try and fund some of the other items. FEMA goes through December 20th, or December 2020 for the reimbursements. So with the custodians, you know, that's approximately, could be about 40,000 a month for us, for those custodians. So it's going to be spread out. So we're really going to manage it really tight, that, in that capacity, to make sure the reimbursement says they're coming back before we have to go for that reserve.
Well, that's great. I'm sure, hopefully, and there's been a lot of conversation about the federal government stepping up and helping to offset some of these costs, that we'll take advantage of every opportunity we have, and I'm sure you will. But, but just off the top of my head, the custodians alone wipe out the reserve we set up. So.
Well, to your point, this is, there's going to be a, a number of unbudgeted expenses that we have to.
Yeah, and we, we knew theoretically, you know, way back when that they were coming. But now it's obviously getting more real when we start attaching the dollars. So anyway, the sooner we know what we're kind of, what the challenge will be, the better. I'm looking at the time. And Kevin, did you want to say anything else about this, the general update?
No.
Before we want to talk about the calendar?
Hopefully have a clear sense of what we're imagining in regard to these, implementing these various mitigation strategies. When we come back together again, we'll really take a closer look at our instructional strategies and unpack that a little more carefully. And then we're finalizing the document that will need to go to the state that will constitute the, the plan that's required for submission. And so just recognize that, you know, what I shared with you tonight is answers a fair number of the questions and requirements that are in the state plan proposal. We have some additional protocols that we're still finalizing with the State Health Department and others as part of that required information.
Okay, well, and I'm glad you're able to describe as much as you know tonight. And I know some people were able to watch the reopening committee meeting. The press has been doing a good job about putting as many of the discussions in the paper as possible. So again, if, if there are questions out there from the public, I hope they come in, you know, just to keep the, the door, the dialogue going and making sure, although I know your, your team is great, but if there's a detail that, that is not yet named, you know, the sooner we name it, the better.
And can we all take our hats off to Lily Keppner, one of our graduates who's been writing for Good Morning Wilton? She's done.
Yeah.
A book.
Absolutely.
She has.
Hey, Lily.
Kevin, I would assume that the state is going to be very timely in their response to us once we've submitted our plans, because we're getting, you know, the plans to do in the end of this month, but we start school three weeks later or, or going to. So I'm hoping that the state doesn't drag their heels and, you know, delays are getting back to us about what we can and cannot do. And they recognize the, the urgency about being responsive to all the plans that are going to be submitted by everybody all at the same time.
Hundred and sixty.
All right, so, so the state will actually approve the plans, Kevin, or what's the process?
I read any provision in the state plan to approve. So I think we can assume that it, it'll be reviewed. And if there are comments, questions or worries, a representative from the State Department will reach out to us. They've also, as we've been on various conference calls with delegates from the State Department of that, they have made themselves available should we need them to advise in our planning. But I think, you know, we're, we're working locally. We're also, you know, working across the region in our, you know, various kind of job type cohorts. So I interface with superintendents weekly and other principals are interacting pretty regularly with their peers across the state, Andrea and Fran, their counterparts and as well. And so, you know, there is, you know, while, you know, we have a model that is geared to Wilton, many of the features are generic when you think about what's in place across towns, because we're doing a lot of best practice sharing regionally.
Okay, thank you. I'll look for the, look forward to the next week's update and the more details as they unfold. We do have to discuss the calendar tonight, so I think it's an important point. Again, I know there's been new information from the state within the last two days, three days, I'm kind of losing track as to when the state came out with the news which you'll describe. But I'll just be really upfront, we're not able to actually vote tonight on that. I think the news is, is really going to change some of the thinking that Kevin and his team has. So we want to listen and understand it, but I, I think we need to give it a little bit of time. And I don't think a week will hurt before we actually vote on it. So thanks.
So two days ago, the State Board of Education voted to provide districts the opportunity to shorten their instructional school year from 180 days to 177 days, allowing districts to take those three days and apply them at the start of the school year toward teacher professional learning and planning. And so, you know, we just got that news, maybe midday Tuesday. Been talking with various people on this call and others about the benefit of that opportunity. Also had some conversation with our union president today about that concept. And the general consensus is that we all, teachers, administrators, everybody else, need as much time as we can possibly have to continue to plan, to engage in professional learning through Schoology and the various technological components that we're developing as we get ready to launch the school year. So I want to share with you, my original thinking was that we ought to recommend moving the school year three days and taking advantage of those three days. One, Kathy, our Miller Driscoll principal, proposed that what we do is on the 26th, 27th and 28th, at each building, invite in one grade level for a half a day. And then allow those teachers working with kids on that grade level to orient them toward the grade, toward the school year, to all of the various changes in the building. And then the teachers who won't have their classes in on that particular, those other two days, will be able to participate in additional professional learning. So just to kind of illustrate how this, this could look. So if you can imagine that the first day, Wednesday, August 26th, that could be a half a day for kindergarten, grade three, grade six, and maybe grades nine and 10. So very small number of kids coming into each building, smaller number of teachers working with those kids. The rest of us will, you know, be able to look at how all of the logistics are unfolding and we can, you know, kind of very gently road test some of these plans we're putting in place. The 27th, we could have in for a half a day, first grade, fourth grade, seventh grade, and say 11th grade, and repeat that orientation process. And then that Friday, that 28th, again, this is just illustrative, we could have second grade, fifth grade, eighth grade and our seniors in to do the same kind of work. I think staggering the start like that will really give us an opportunity to look at some of these plans and, you know, perhaps if we need to adjust on the fly. And then the expectation would be all students would return on the 31st, full day of school, and we're off to the races. So that's the proposal that I'd like the board to contemplate and hopefully take action on next week.
Could, could you do us a favor and maybe write it down? And just, just do a draft so we could see it?
Sure.
With the hour, with the times attached and all of that? That would, that would be helpful. It sounds like a creative approach and something that may balance the need for kids to get oriented and teachers to have enough time to prepare. So it's creative, so let's look at it.
Yeah.
And so does that make the school year 179, 100, I guess I'm doing my math wrong? 178? Because each student would go to school one day that, that first week, right?
Correct.
Okay, it's 178 days.
So, well, thanks to Kathy for thinking of that.
You're welcome.
I noticed you're hiding, but that's okay. Any other questions or comments? Because it is kind of a new concept. So we all sort of, I think, I think we kind of get it, but we need to, I need to see it anyway, on paper. So we all sort of, I think, I think we kind of get it, but we need to, I need to see it anyway on paper.
Yeah, and, you know, the challenge always is striking the balance maximizing instructional time and carving out time for teachers to to plan and to train, and so.
Okay. Do you think between now and then, you could get some input from maybe the PTA leaders and teachers?
Yeah, this is, probably, you know, in this, this meeting tonight is the first that just about everybody's hearing about that, so I'll certainly follow up with some input.
Right, right. We may not be able to mount a full-scale survey, but at least get a sense from, I think the PTA leaders are always good at at sort of reading the the parent feelings.
Yes.
Kevin, a question for you, another issue. I I'm concerned about the number of potential non-shows from the staff as the school year begins. And how we address that, how we, you know, compensate for that. I'm just curious, have you had any discussion with any of your other peers? And have they done the same surveys that we did? And are they getting the same kind of responses from their staffs that we have a significant number of teachers? So we just aren't going to come back for a variety of reasons, all of which are good. Is there any, are we out in left field compared to the others, or are we all in the same boat?
No, I I have not spoken to any of my colleagues about their faculty surveys. You know, I know they've all surveyed their families, or many of them have surveyed their families. I do have a meeting with the Southern Fairfield Superintendent tomorrow, and this will be one of the conversation points. So I'll be able to provide all of the information. But I, you, you know, Maria and I have met with our union president and the CEA representative. And, you know, he's certainly, you know, in touch with teachers all across the region. And I think, you know, is sharing that, that, you know, the concerns that some of our staff held, you know, are not unique to our staff, right? Those are some very universal concerns.
Okay, all right, okay.
Kevin, is there a drop dead date where teachers have to make a decision?
We haven't established a date, you know, as Maria noted before. We ask people to identify themselves and she is, you know, working. Because I think there's a lot of complexity to the, you know, to the questions and concerns around this. And so, you know, we're going to try to, to the best extent possible, you know, have as much in place, you know, probably over the next three weeks, so we can really have a clear understanding of who's going to be where and doing what. But it's, there's just a lot to unpack here.
I I would assume we're getting advice from council on this issue as to if someone says, I'm not coming back. What do we do? Do we continue to pay you or you're done? You know, have you resigned? I would think that would be a critical point to understand. And it's very, not an easy one. It's a very complex issue, I think. Okay.
Can I ask a quick question about face masks on a totally separate direction? You guys were talking about having mask breaks. Can you give us an idea of what you think that might look like?
I think, you know, that's another question, Jen, that we're still trying to sort out. And there wasn't any follow-up guidance from the State Department of Ed, except to say, well, you know, the school districts will figure it out. So I don't know that we have a clear idea yet. You know, I think we do have, I think, a pretty clear understanding that, you know, we'll need to have those opportunities. But whether that's, you know, taking kids outside and spreading out, you know, six feet plus, so people can remove their masks. You know, I think on good weather days, that's probably likely one of the ways to do it. In school, how we do that is is not fully clear to me yet.
Okay.
I do like the idea of trying to use the outdoor space as much as possible. So I think that anything that we can do to try to, you know, take advantage of that, especially since we are with the younger kids, you know, doing, you know, more intensive cohorting and keeping in classroom, keeping in the classroom. I think just being able to take advantage of outdoors and even if it's in a tent or something like that, to be able to have a change of scenery or environment and have that have that ability is good.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda and we have a meeting next week. And is there a reopening committee, you know, the Wednesday meeting, Kevin, as well? Okay.
Let me just confirm, but I can believe those are set up for.
All right.
Yeah, they are every Wednesday, actually, so there is one scheduled, I believe, for next week.
Yeah.
All right, I just want to make sure people listening realize that there's another opportunity to 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 listen if they'd like. At this point, can we get into comments from the public? Lucille, were you able to find it?
Yes, I'm sorry, you know, I was panicking because of the recording, didn't look like it was recording, so.
That's all right, that's all right.
But we are recording, and I have the comment. Jason Lord, 14th May Lane. Who are the members of the Wilton Public Schools Reentry Committee and what areas of expertise do they bring to the committee? As someone who has spent a significant time planning and preparing disaster plans, continuity of business and government, and extensive staffing planning for pandemics, I am confused and startled by the information being reported out from the committee. What is the section criteria to join? What are the requirements to join? What is the process to join this committee?
Okay, I'm not sure if the writer is still listening, but like all public comments, the board doesn't respond directly or immediately during a meeting. But we do listen and take comments and questions to heart and provide follow-up, sometimes from the staff when appropriate. So thank you for that. Are there other comments, Lucille?
No, there are no more.
Okay, all right, then we're through the agenda. We know when our next meeting is. And so at this point in time, I'm adjourning the meeting at 8:25. All right, so thank you, everyone, and have a good night and a safe week. Thanks.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.